I wanted to start out by going through the Apostles Creed, not, not in a studious way, but just sort of our opening prayer. And I'm gonna go slow enough that you can think about, if somebody asks you to look up different statements like, "I believe in God the Father Almighty, Maker of Heaven and Earth", you'd go to Genesis probably. At least one place. And so, think, think about where you would go and how many of these come out of the, in fact, the book that we're studying right now. That's, was my point is we're, we're beyond the four Gospels and we still haven't filled out all our theology. So here's the Apostles Creed. "I believe in God the Father Almighty, Maker of Heaven and Earth, and in Jesus Christ, His only Son, our Lord, who was conceived by the Holy Ghost, born of the Virgin Mary, suffered under Pontius Pilate, was crucified, dead, and buried. He descended into hell; and the third day he rose again from the dead. He ascended into heaven and stood on the right hand of God the Father Almighty. From thence he shall come to judge the quick and the dead." I believe in the Holy Ghost, the holy Catholic, meaning universal church, and the communion of saints, the forgiveness of sins, the resurrection of the body, and the life everlasting. Amen. So I don't know whether you've had a chance to take a quick look at the Book of Acts, particularly I ask if you might read the first chapter. And in looking at Acts, it's written by Luke, same author that wrote the Gospel according to Luke. Acts is sort of a sequel to that Gospel. And so if we, we just read the first couple of verses in Acts and then compare them to the first few verses in Luke. I get somebody to read those verses one and two of Acts.
I can do that. In the first book, Theophilus, I wrote about all that Jesus did and taught from the beginning until the day when He was taken up to heaven after giving instructions through the Holy Spirit to the apostles whom He had chosen.
Okay. So it points out that he had written a former book, he was writing it, dedicating it to Theopolis. Theophilus, who may or may not have been a real person, the name translates as lover of God. And clearly, this is an awful lot of effort to put into a letter to one person. Luke is writing with the intention that this would be read by a large audience. Okay, there was one other thing. Oh, he says about all that Jesus began to do, which would imply that he's gonna tell you more about what Jesus is doing.
I, I was gonna say, so my version, which is the NRSB, says did and taught. But I have a note here from another class that I begin about from the NIV says began to do and teach, meaning he's not done yet. And I thought that was pretty neat.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have a, a parallel of the two translations here. It would be interesting to look at that. Let's go to Luke's Gospel. Find the beginning of it here. I have in preparation for my class here, a very handy just a book of the, of the New Testament in large print. And you get the whole New Testament in this one book. You don't have to carry your whole Bible around to, to study it. It's quite useful. So if we could read the first four verses of Luke, chapter one.
Yeah, I can do that. "Since many have undertaken to set down an orderly account of the events that have been fulfilled among us, just as they were handed on to us by those who from the beginning were eyewitnesses and servants of the word, I too decided, after investigating everything carefully from the very first, to write an orderly account for you, most excellent Theophilus, so that you may know the truth concerning the things about which you have been instructed."
So I, I really like Luke's introduction, what his motivation was, how he went about it. In, in reading critiques of different biblical chapters, Luke was much more a historian. He, he did an excellent job of recording historical events. And I sort of like that idea that there's some accuracy. Now, where did he get his information?
First hand, eyewitnesses.
Eyewitnesses, that's it. And what eyewitnesses do you think he had available to him?
Some of the apostles.
Yeah, absolutely. So I want to explore who Luke was. There are three New Testament references to Luke. And the first one is by far the most interesting. It's Colossians, fourth chapter, verses seven through fourteen. Colossians four. Would somebody volunteer for that?
Colossians four, starting with what?
With I'm sorry, seven through fourteen. Starting with seven.
Tycho Gass will tell you all the news about me. He is a dear brother, a faithful minister and fellow servant in the Lord. I am sending him to you for the express purpose that you may know about our circumstances and that he may encourage your hearts. He is coming with Onesimus, our faithful and dear brother, who is one of you. They will tell, tell you everything that is happening here. My fellow prisoner Aristarchus sends you his greetings, as does Mark, the cousin of Barnabas. You have received instructions about him. If he comes to you, welcome him. Jesus, who is called Justice, also sends greetings. These are the only Jews among my fellow workers for the kingdom of God, for they have proved a comfort to me. Apaphras, who is one of you and a servant of, of Christ Jesus, sends greetings. He is always wrestling in prayer for you, that you may stand firm in all the will of God, mature and fully assured. I vouch for him that he is working hard for you and for those that, those at Laodicea and Herapolis. Our dear friend Luke, the doctor, and Demais, send greetings.
Thank you. So from that, we see that, this, this is Paul writing, presumably it's Paul. May or may not be actually Paul, but it's written as though it was Paul. And he's referring to people that are helping him where he is. He's, he's a prisoner at this point. And he mentions Luke's name. But what does he say about Luke?
Is a doctor.
Okay. One other thing?
Well, your version said, dear, mine says the beloved physician. So people love him and
Also a friend.
Well, I, I'm picking up on line eleven. "These are the only Jews among my coworkers for the kingdom of God. They have proved a comfort to me." And then he goes on to list Luke as, as one who presumably isn't a Jew. And so that would mean he was a Gentile. And he is probably the only Gentile who's written a chapter in the New Testament. And do you think that would affect it, how, what his outlook was, what he chose to present? He's, he's probably writing to a, an audience that are more Gentiles than, than Jewish. And certainly, his outlook has got to be one that is a broader, more universal outlook of what he's writing. Two other references, I don't know whether it's worth going to those. One would challenge you because it's Philamen and there's no chapter for Philamen. How would you explain that? One chapter long, that's right. I need to put some little tabs on these. I didn't do that ahead of time. In Philamen, verses twenty-three and twenty-four.
Yeah, Luke is mentioned with some of the same people on the list in Colossians, isn't he? Apaphris, Mark, Aristarchus, Demas, and Luke.
Yeah, and it is interesting mostly just because, you know, that's another reference in the, the New Testament to Luke. I was more interested in the curiosity of, of Philamen being only one, one chapter long. And so I, I puzzled over that when I first saw the references, thinking they forgotten to put the chapter down. And there's another reference in
Again, in Philamen. What was the verse? Twenty-three and twenty-four.
If you want to read those, you, you might. They're gonna be the same name puzzles that Tom had.
Second Timothy four eleven, I have a reference to that as well, that says Luke is also Paul's sole faithful companion.
Yeah, I, I have that verses nine through twenty-one in Second Timothy, chapter four. Yeah, four, eleven. Yeah, Second Timothy, chapter four, verses nine through twenty-one. Oh, and this is interesting if you're studying Paul's journeys, is he is really very close to the end of his journeys at this reading. He's looking at winter coming on. He's asking for a couple favors here. "Do your best to come to me quickly. For Demas, because he loved the world, has deserted me, has gone to Thessalonica, Cresence has gone to Galatia, and Titus to Delmasia. Only Luke is with me. Get Mark and bring him with you, because he is helping, helpful to me in my ministry. I send Tycho to Ephesus, and when you come, bring my cloak that I left with Carpus and Druas and my scrolls, especially the parchments." So Paul is having a hard time there as a prisoner. So I would like to, to go back into this book of Luke. So let's, let's, let's remember what we read here in Acts. It says, "In my former book, I wrote about all that Jesus began to do and to teach until the day he was taken up to heaven after giving instructions through the Holy Spirit to the apostles that he had chosen." So the start of Acts is after the resurrection. And it anticipates the ascension. If we go to Luke, the last chapter in Luke. And that's chapter twenty-four. Let's start with verse twelve. And we may break this down into two or three readings, but it's a story that I particularly like the, the part about the road to Emmaus. It starts in with the, the women having gone back and told the disciples, and the words seemed like nonsense. Somebody start in with verse twelve.
"But Peter got up and ran to the tomb, stooping and looking in. He saw the women cloths by themselves. Then he went home, amazed at what had happened. Now on that same day, two of them were going to a village called Emmaus, about seven miles from Jerusalem, and talking with each other about all these things that had happened. While they were talking and discussing, Jesus Himself came near and went with them, but their eyes were kept from recognizing Him. And He said to them, 'What are you discussing with each other while you walk along?' They stood still, looking sad. Then one of them, whose name was Cleopas, answered Him, 'Are you the only stranger in Jerusalem who does not know the things that have taken place there in these days? He asked them, 'What things?' They replied, 'The things about Jesus of Nazareth, who was a prophet mighty in deed and word before God and all the people, and how our chief priests and leaders handed him over to be condemned to death and crucified him. But we had hoped that he was the one to redeem Israel. Yes, and besides all this, it is now the third day since these things took place. Moreover, some women of our two, of our group astounded us. They were at the tomb early this morning, and when they did not find his body there, they came back and told us that they had indeed seen a vision of angels who said that he was alive. Some of those who were with us went to the tomb and found it just as the women had said, but they did not see him. Then He said to them, 'Oh, how foolish you are, and how slow of heart to believe all that the prophets have declared! Was it not necessary that the Messiah should suffer these things and then enter into his glory? Then, beginning with Moses and all the prophets, He interpreted to them the things about himself in all the scriptures.' Don't we keep going?
Oh, let's see. Well, if you're, if you're tired of reading, we can, we can look at what we've said there and then we're gonna go on until Jesus ascends at the end of the chapter. But I think we should take a break here and so the, the punchline for this is still coming up. So far, these two disciples, unnamed disciples, probably not one of the twelve, were walking on the road to Emmaus, or the road, you know, the village called Emmaus. And why don't they recognize Jesus?
Because they're not expecting to see Him. It would have been impossible for Him to be there.
Well, and you know, apparently they didn't understand what was written in the, you know, on the prophets and so on. At least that they were slow to believe all that.
Yeah, so it, it was at least an unbelievable experience that you would be walking with somebody that, that looked like Jesus and sounded like Jesus but wasn't Jesus. Just didn't cross their mind.
Almost as though there is a veil over their eyes.
Okay, so for some reason, God had decided that they shouldn't recognize Him right away. And so He, He talks to them, tells them about the things that the prophets had spoken about suffering. Suffering before He entered His glory. And He explained to them what was said in all the scriptures. Did we get that far?
Yeah, yeah.
So He, He's trying to but reveal to them what the plan was, what God's plan had been. But they still have this veil that they, they don't see Him. And then, starting with twenty-eight, "As they approached the village to which they were going, Jesus continued on, as if he were going further. But He urged them strongly, 'Stay with us, for it is nearly evening, the day is almost over.' So he went in to stay with them. When he was at table with them, he took bread, gave thanks, broke it, and began to give it to them. Then their eyes were opened, and they recognized Him." Now, we had a, a class sometime back that I didn't get to attend, was about the relationship between food and our belief in Jesus, our faith. And I would bet that this was one of the, the points that was brought up, that several of the instances where Jesus appears after His resurrection, of people recognize Him only in the breaking of bread and the, the sharing. "They ask each other, 'Were not our hearts burning within us as He talked with us on the road and opened the scriptures to us? It's an experience that we should strive for ourselves." The, the opening of the Spirit should, should, I don't know how, how to say that, but you know, we, we, we should hope for that experience with the, I think you'll, you'll see something like that when the, the Holy Spirit is given to the disciples later on, to the believers. "So they, they got up and returned once to Jerusalem. They found the eleven, because they, they're not twelve anymore. Those with them assembled together and saying, 'It is true, the Lord has risen and has appeared to Simon.' So these are other disciples that weren't on the road to Emmaus, Emmaus saying that." Okay, so could somebody pick up on verse thirty-six and read through forty-nine? I don't think there are any trick names in that.
"While they were still talking about this, Jesus Himself stood among them and said to them, 'Peace be with you.' They were startled and frightened, thinking they saw a ghost. He said to them, 'Why are you troubled, and why do doubts rise, rise in your minds? Look at my hands and my feet. Is it, it is I myself. Touch me and see. A ghost does not have flesh and bones, as you see I have.' When He had said this, He showed them His hands and feet. And while they were still, and while they still did not believe it, because of joy and amazement, He asked them, 'Do you have anything here to eat?' They gave Him a piece of broiled fish, and He took it and ate it in their presence. He said to them, 'This is what I told you while I was still with you. Everything must be fulfilled that is written about me in the law of Moses, the prophets, and the Psalms. Then He opened their minds so, so they could understand the scriptures. He told them, 'This is what is written: The Christ will suffer and rise from the dead on the third day, and a repentance and forgiveness of sins will be preached in His name to all nations, beginning at Jerusalem. You are witnesses of these things. I am going to send you what my Father has promised, and stay in the city until you have been clothed with power from on high.'"
Okay, so two or three main points that I think we will come back and revisit. First of all, does he have a real physical body at this point?
Yes.
Yes, they, they touch his hands, they, he eats food. No, this is, this is not a ghost. And it emphasizes that the scriptures say that the Messiah must suffer and rise on the, from the dead on the third day. Well, certainly, I, I know that this suffering servant is a, a theme of Isaiah. And he's, he's going to rise from the dead. And that will offer repentance for the forgiveness of sins that will be preached in His name to all nations, beginning at Jerusalem. That will be preached in his name to all nations, beginning at Jerusalem. So we may need to figure that one out again. But uh, anyway, here's a hint that uh, that's that was his goal. Uh. The repentance and for the forgiveness of sins will be preached. The name of all nations beginning at Jerusalem. Maybe that's more, I don't know, do you do you see that as uh? Offering the forgiveness of sins or more that just people will uh. Uh. But do the repentance.
Well, the Holy Spirit will do the repentance, but this is a proclamation of this is what you're going to be doing, preparing people.
You are witnesses of these things. Uh, a lot of the book of Acts is about witnessing. Being witnesses. And then a promise at the end, I'm going to send you what my father has promised. So stay in the city until you've been clothed with the power of Mount High. Of the uh. The promise for the uh, the Holy Ghost. Uh, John has a much more. Uh, wordy. Uh, scripture reading than than Luke. Luke just alludes to. Uh, this promise at this point, he he in Acts will come back and and. Uh, fill that out. And then the 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 last, whatever these three verses. About the ascension. Somebody read those.
When he had led them out to the vicinity of Bethany, he lifted up his hands and blessed them. While he was blessing them, he left them and was taken up into heaven. Then they worshiped him and returned to Jerusalem with great joy. And they stayed continually at the temple praising God.
Okay. So. He uh, had this uh. Lifted up his hands in a blessing to them as he he ascended. And he's taken up into into heaven. Uh. Now, we're not quite clear here whether heaven is the sky. Or is heaven God's realm? Uh, but I think uh, the more we read, the more we find that. Heaven wasn't intended to be a physical place. It was uh, God's kingdom. And the last line says that they worship continuously at the temple praising God. So. The the temple was the source of a lot of Jesus's uh. Uh, persecution. Uh. I think they probably felt kind of uncomfortable going back to the temple. Maybe not, but the temple was where you reached God.
And people, it's also where you reached people. Don't you think?
Mm hmm. Okay, so I I hadn't thought about that aspect of it, but that's. That's probably true. Uh, if you wanted to communicate with either fellow believers or eventually proselytize. Uh, the temple would be a good place to do it. So let's let's look at how Acts deals with uh, those events then. Uh, not the road to Emmaus, it doesn't include that, but if we do. Uh, first chapter in Acts, start with verse three through eleven.
Yeah, I can read that. Uh, after his suffering, I guess that's Jesus, he showed himself to these men. And gave many convincing proofs that he was alive. He appeared to them over a period of forty days and spoke about the kingdom of God. On one occasion, while he is eating with them. He gave them this command, do not leave Jerusalem, but wait for the gift. My father promised, which you have heard me speak about, for John baptized with water, but in a few days. You will be baptized with Holy Spirit. So when they met together, they asked him, Lord, are you at this time going to restore the kingdom of Israel? And he said to them. It's not for you to know the times or dates, the Father is set by his own authority. But you will receive power when the Holy Spirit comes on you and you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem and in all Judea. And Samaria and the ends of the world, ends of the earth. After he said this, he was taken up before their very eyes and a cloud hid him from their sight. They're looking intently up in the sky. As he was going, when suddenly two men dressed in white stood beside them. Men of Galilee, they said, why do you stand there looking up into the sky? The same Jesus, who has been taken from you into heaven, will come back in the same way you have seen him go into heaven.
Thank you. Okay, um. So forty days, it says. After the resurrection, Jesus continued to visit with the uh, believers. Doesn't say exactly which, uh, probably at least the uh, the eleven that were his disciples, but. Uh, it mentions later on there. Over a hundred, uh, I think a hundred and thirty people that are believers and uh, are gathered together. And he says, don't leave Jerusalem, wait for the gift my father has promised. Um. And then uh, explaining that a bit, he says. Uh. John baptized with water. In a few days, you will be baptized with the Holy Spirit. What do you think? The uh.
John, it's all tied in with the with the mandatory Jewish festivals because they've just celebrated Passover and in forty day uh. Passover and in forty days, they'll celebrate uh, uh, Sukkot, the the harvest festival. Or Pentecost.
Okay, but that's Pentecost, that's fifty days. It's not the forty days that we're being spoken of here. So. You know, uh, we're we're gonna talk about Pentecost, uh. Uh, hopefully, we can stretch light out to the point where I don't have to talk about it tonight because I'm not totally prepared, but. Uh, yeah, it was one of the harvest festivals, the Jews had three harvest festivals. And uh, those, well, they may have had more than three harvest festivals. There were three where they were expected to journey to Jerusalem. And so on those occasions, there were large crowds in Jerusalem. One of them obviously is the Passover. And the Passover is a reference point for the resurrection.
Means that the people were had sort of a disconnect uh, because with Jesus because. They were thinking that he was going to restore the kingdom of Israel. And you know, this seems to be a theme that that. Uh. See, it keeps coming up is. Are you going to be the one that restores the kingdom of of Israel, you know? And Jesus says, he doesn't say that, that he he is, but. He gives a different opinion.
Right, he sort of gives a gives a stall here, he doesn't tell them that you're you're all wrong, but. Uh, he's he's not giving them any encouragement with that thought. Um. Part of the reason disciples are thinking about that. I think comes from uh, it was back in Matthew. Uh, he sort of promises them that when he becomes, goes to his kingdom. They'll each one get a uh, a throne in that kingdom. I think that's Matthew twenty eight. Or twenty nine and stuff.
Well, it also seems like they want to have an exclusive. You know, kingdom, whereas Jesus wanted to have an an inclusive kingdom.
Right, do you remember uh, uh, who's it Peter and John asked? Uh, or maybe it wasn't uh, Peter, but one of the the other disciples. Ask if they can be on the right hand and the left hand of Jesus, right, in the kingdom. So. I don't know how well we're gonna explore it, but what is this kingdom like that Jesus is going to be king of? And. When does it start?
Does it start when the Holy Spirit comes upon you?
You know, I think you get different, different views of when Jesus goes to assume the uh. The throne, I think that is tied to the ascension. Uh, we are gonna hit that in verse nine. Says, after he said this, he was taken up before their very eyes and a cloud hid him from their sight. And they were looking intently up into the sky where he was going. And suddenly two men dressed in white stood beside them. Men of Galilee, they said, why do you stand here looking into the sky? This same Jesus who's been taken from you into heaven. Will come back in the same way that you've seen him go into heaven. Okay.
So they they still seem to have a hard time with this.
Mm hmm. Yeah, no, they're they're not understanding it very much at all. And they won't for another, what, ten days or so till they get the Holy Spirit.
Yeah.
And even then, I'm not sure that their eyes are fully open by. I I think the uh. Some of these gospel ideas uh, evolve. Uh, you know, they take a lot of thinking and a lot of talking and uh, there's not just a sudden. Oh, I get it all now. But that's that's my view. And and that's one of the things why. You know, you try to read the Bible yourself and understand what uh, what it's saying to you. But Jesus gives them a definite charge here. He says, you'll receive power when the Holy Spirit comes to you. And you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem, in all Judea and Samaria and to the ends of the earth. And Luke in his writing carries through. Watching that progression of the different places that uh, his disciples go to spread the gospel. So that's sort of a formula for Luke, it's a, you know, the the disciples were going all over the place, but. He uses that as his format for uh, the description of where they are uh, going to preach his word. So he's taken up with a cloud. And that to me brings an image to mind of God going before the uh. Hebrew people when they're being led out of Egypt.
Oh, yeah.
Don, I I'm not sure you. You made an expression that maybe you're not quite sure.
About that one, no.
I I I'm sure that there was a pillar of fire and a pillar of smoke. And I'm I'm not so sure about the 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 cloud. But you know, you find uh, God in the cloud on uh, uh. The mountain when he's giving out the uh, the ten commandments. Now, whether this. Is the source of this cloud. Uh, or not, is speculative.
They have to connect it to.
But. Anyway, Jesus goes up into heaven. Uh, we've got these two fellows dressed in white. Which I think the implication is they might be angels very much like the the. Uh, two people dressed in white in the other tomb.
Mm hmm.
And the promise that he will come back. Uh, doesn't give the time scale when he's coming back. But I think that's. Uh. Something that uh, as we read many of the readings about the end times. That return of Jesus. Um, is something that is being anticipated. And. So when Jesus goes up to heaven, is that where he sits on the right hand of God? We don't, we don't see him anymore in a physical form in the rest of the New Testament.
We don't really know, but we're told that he went to sit on the throne.
Yeah, whether that's a symbolic. Physical throne or he he takes that position of power at least. Uh, sitting on God's right hand side means that he's God's right hand man. Uh. And and once again, this is kind of thing that you're sort of wrestling with is as you read this is is. What's the relationship between God and Jesus? What's the relationship between Jesus and the Holy Spirit? Uh, what's the relationship between God and the Holy Spirit? And. Now, we're back in uh, I think it's not the apostle's creed, but the uh. Or the other early creed.
Nicene.
Nicene Creed. You know, the the counselor at Nicene was struggling with these problems. You know, how how do you? What what is it that we believe in? And a lot of what we believe in comes out of uh, Paul's teachings. Uh, at least this revealed involves teachings.
So is the Holy Spirit on God's left?
Does it matter? I don't know.
Not really, no, but I'm just wondering.
Yes, um, I think there's another verse about uh, Jesus pouring out the Holy Spirit. And I don't, I I know I've read it uh, within the last few days in preparation here, but I don't know where it was. And. Uh. That to me uh, resonates with the idea of being baptized with the Holy Spirit. And it's a, almost you could be immersed in it. Some some of these are just my mind wandering, you know, this, it's it's like. Uh, Tom asking who's on the left hand side of.
Well, John, I remember number of years ago, you led a class which. You talked about how God, Jesus and the Spirit were so intertwined, they couldn't be separated. You know, just uh.
Yeah, it it was mystery in that.
Yeah, oh, well, yeah, and for us to understand that, well, then how did Jesus come to earth or how does the Holy Spirit then come? To all of us, but. You.
We say they have three personalities, one, uh, obviously God is the uh, being the creator. In this, and he's also father of Jesus, Jesus is the son. Uh, but. But I think you can't draw a fine line and say this is where one starts and the other one stops. And the Holy Spirit is even more it's like that cloud. How do they define the edge of it? And particularly since our experiences with the Holy Spirit are not as clear-cut. You know, I mean, we all have probably had experiences with the Holy Spirit. But they're sort of hard to define where they stop and start.
Could you say that the Holy Spirit is a mover and a shaker? You know, it
No, I didn't say it, but you could say that.
Yeah. Well, I was just, you know, going back to the two men that are looking up into the sky. And, you know, what is it, the the, the men in white says, where, what verse was that?
Eleven.
Yeah, that, why do you stand here looking into the sky? So maybe the start of a kingdom is right there in front of their eyes. They're being called to share the good news with everybody. Stop looking up into the sky and share it with other people.
I know one of Philip Yancey's books paraphrases this situation. And these, the disciples are standing, looking up into the sky, and the angels say, well, don't just stand there, do something. Why are you just standing there?
Move and shake.
Move and shake, yes. But the question of, is that the start of Jesus' kingdom? I think quite, that's one of the answers, at least. There are multiple answers to that. Trying to define when Jesus came, I think that is when Jesus' kingdom, either that or the resurrection, or sometime right around that, is what's commonly thought of as the start of Jesus' kingdom. But then there's something called inaugurated discalage. It's also called already and not yet, which talks about, well, how fully is Jesus the ruler at this point? Or not so much how fully is Jesus the ruler? You know, the kingdom is started and not yet completed. We don't get to the completion until Jesus comes back in the second coming. So as I say, that's just one view. That's one that somebody spent a lot of effort working out the details of it, and he was from Princeton. But whether he was right or not is, it's hard to say. And that's a question that we each one get to answer on our own, I think, is, are we living in the time of the kingdom here and now? Or is it something that we're looking forward to in the future? I think that's an excellent place to stop. Next time, we will hear about the Holy Spirit coming. We'll have a little better idea of my timing because I had no idea how long it would take to get through this many verses. And I would hope to guided a little more discussion. I tend to preach or teach not by listening, but by talking. So I apologize for that. Join us again next week. Is there anything anyone would like to say?
Can you tell us what we should be reading?
If I ask for Acts two through seven, second through seventh chapters. If you don't get that far, that's okay too. But I think that's kind of the direction we're headed. That will include, the Holy Spirit will include some of Peter's preaching, some of the narration now that they're using for what they're preaching. And I don't think we are likely to get beyond that. I think the whole class is not going to get beyond chapter twelve. That would be when Paul starts his journeys. And that's material for another class. Somebody else can teach that one. I mean, that could be a good in-depth class, not only where he went, but what did he say when he went to all those places? I think the third, maybe the fourth session, we will see Paul's it's not a conversion exactly, but his experience where he changes direction dramatically. He's blinded and comes out going in a different direction because he sees Jesus. Would anybody like to offer a prayer in closing?
Sure, I'd do that. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for our time tonight and for the word that is kind of being opened before us. Pray that you will continue to guide our discussions. Thank you for John and his leadership tonight. And as we close, we pray for the Davis and family and grateful that Walt is now in your everlasting arms. Would you pray that you be with Bonnie and her children and grant them peace and comfort in this time? We pray in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you all for being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Night.